I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Board Committee of a Whole meeting to order. The time is six thirty-one. Board members, as I call your name, please reprite present with public record. Vice President Perry.
Present.
Secretary Green. Treasurer McIntyre. Treasurer McIntyre.
Present. Sorry.
That's okay. Assistant Secretary Treasurer Ellis McNeil. Assistant Secretary Treasurer Ellis McNeil. Board Trustee Walker.
Present.
My name is here.
Yes. Board Trustee Wright.
Present.
And myself, President McIntyre. At this time, the board will hear any comments from the public. The public is reminded that you may raise, that they may raise their hand to speak or submit comments in the chat section. Also, anyone who sent an email prior to today's meeting will have that read. Members of the public are reminded that the Board of Education by its bylaws thirteen seventy are not obligated to answer questions, make statements, or comments in response to issues raised by the public in general. Such issues will be referred to the Superintendent for Investigation, Study, or Recommendation. At this time, I will ask Stephen if anyone has their hand raised, has raised their hand, submitted a comment, or sent an email. It may take them a moment, so please be patient.
Good evening, Board. There are currently no hands raised, comments, or any emails received from the public.
The public is reminded that you may submit your comments by email to fboe@flintschools.org to have them read at the next meeting. Thank you. Human Resources, oh, I'm getting the page. Now we're going to take the Human Resources Committee of a Whole Action Item one point one Personnel Recommendations. At this time, I'll call upon Ms. Washington to present the action items to the board.
Hello and good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Hi, Ms. Washington.
I seek your approval to move Action Item one point two Personnel Recommendations to the regular board meeting on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one for approval.
Do we have a second?
A second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Treasurer McIntyre.
Um, the line item for Recommendation for Employment under A with Daniel Prizbelski, I believe, which has been admitted from the past couple of meetings, the NJROTC instructor, it looks like his salary has finally been disclosed of fifty-four thousand and fifty dollars. In the discussion where we were talking about his salary, it was mentioned, and I can't remember by whom, that half of his salary would be paid by some other program, I believe. We would pay for half of it. And my question is, is this the half that we're paying, or are we going to pay half of the fifty-four thousand?
We would pay half of the fifty-four thousand.
And how was the fifty-four thousand determined again?
By the minimum instructor's pay that comes from the government for retired military officers. And then it is aligned to the professional salary schedule that is structured within the district. And so that determined the fifty-four thousand that you see there.
And was anyone able to get answers to my inquiry about why we're paying half of instruction for military personnel? Why are we paying, why isn't the government paying the whole thing?
Well, I can get answers to that for you, but the way that they're.
I asked that before.
The way the program is set up, as I shared with the board previously, was that when individuals are retired from the military and they assume instructor positions with public school districts, their program is set up where they provide a cost sharing for a salary of fifty percent, and that school district pays for the other fifty percent. So that's the program that is established for JROTC that has been administered in school districts when those retirees come onboard and teach.
And thank you. Thank you for that information. I would still like to request why there wasn't any more inquiry into, you know, us being Flint in the particular situation that we're in, you know, why we're footing half of this salary. I understand that that's quote-unquote the way that things are done, but, you know, we need to think outside of the box in terms of how we're, you know, handling our fiscal responsibilities. So in that line, it was also mentioned to me that this particular individual is getting paid that salary, and he has less than ten students. And I would wonder how many students he's, this program is overseeing, less than a dozen? Is that true?
Not to, not to my knowledge. I don't know. But I will.
For someone who's, who's getting a comparable, so a teacher who's getting a comparable salvage, salary in the rest of the, the school district, I'd like to know how many students are in their classroom and how many they're responsible for over the year versus what this individual is going to be responsible for. Because I, I've gotten, you know, and I hope I'm wrong. I hope it is more than this number, but from what I've heard, and, you know, this isn't like official or, you know, I, I'm just asking questions because I really don't know, and I would like a definite answer, especially if, you know, that's the, that's the word that's going around, is that he's responsible for less than a dozen people. So if you could get the number of students.
Okay.
Please, because that, that concerns me. I would hate to see an overloaded kindergarten teacher or an overloaded high school teacher have to be responsible for ten times that amount of students, you know, for what, in my opinion, is more responsibility.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no more discussion, the motion to move Action Item one point two to the regular board meeting for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Joyce Ellis McNeil. Yes or no to?
Yes.
Danielle, Danielle Green.
Yes.
Laura McIntyre.
No.
Vera Perry.
Yes.
Adrian Walker.
Yes.
Diana Wright.
Yes.
Myself, Carol McIntosh, yes. The motion passes, six yes, one no. Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Thank you.
We will move to the Finance and Operations Committee of a Whole. Action Item eleven point one Authorization to Install Wireless Access Points. At this time, I'll call upon Ms. Donprey to present action to the board.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I seek your approval to move Action Item eleven point one Authorization to Install Wireless Access Points to the regular board meeting on February the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one for approval.
A move.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? How many buildings will this cover? Is this for all our builders that are in operation? I think it did say it was.
Mister, I would defer to Mister Chapman.
All buildings except for Holmes and Brunel.
Why was Holmes and Brunel not included, if you don't mind me asking, sir?
They have a different internet service over there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Is it?
Go ahead, Ms. McIntyre.
Um, I've heard from several staff and, and teaching employees that the wireless is completely inadequate, especially given the situation with COVID, and a lot are using their own personal phones and, and devices in order to have access, and that the, the access is spotty and really problematic. Is this going to alleviate those issues? Is that what this is for?
Is there, is there any further discussion? Seeing no more discussion, the motion to move Action Item eleven point one to the regular board for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Joyce Ellis McNeil.
Yes.
Danielle Green.
Yes.
Laura McIntyre.
Yes.
Vera Perry.
Yes.
Adrian Walker.
Yes.
Diana Wright.
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh, yes. Now we'll move to Action Item eleven point two Authorization to Contract for Underground Storage Tanks Removal Services. Ms. Donprey, please present this action.
I seek your approval to move Action Item eleven point two Authorization to Contract for Underground Storage Tank Removal Services to the regular board meeting on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one for approval.
A move.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion concerning this item?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Perry.
And I don't know. I thought that we had already, whoa, gosh, about what, three, four years ago? I thought they had already removed those storage tanks. Something came before us about the tanks. So, uh, just, uh, uh, don't have to do it tonight, but if anybody could re, research that and just see what was brought to us, I believe it was under, um, it was between Tuwab and Lopez about the tanks being removed. So somebody could review that for me and let me know.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody else remember something about tanks?
I remember that.
Okay. Yeah, just, just please, I'd appreciate that, so we could just know that.
Yeah, I remember that, and I wasn't even on the board. I remember listening to it.
I have a question as well.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Wright.
The process for our meeting, so will, will the, I thought committee chairs ran each section of the meetings during Committee of a Whole. Has that changed?
Well.
I'll, I'll provide clarity, President. Until you, as a board, formally act and approve.
I can't hear you, Monica.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's better.
Okay, thank you. I just want to provide clarity. If you recall, until you adopt the committee assignments, the president runs.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
Remember? Okay.
Okay, I remember. Okay. So we haven't gotten, so that is tonight, though, right?
Correct.
Oh, okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? I, I have a question concerning the tanks. With us being in such financial constraints, is it feasible for us to make a move on something like this right now? I mean, is it necessary? We need so many other things.
Yes, ma'am. It's the state law, we have to pull those tanks out of the ground.
Is it a time span that we have to do it by, or?
Yes, ma'am. It is.
What is that time? What, what is the time span? And have we maxed out on that?
No, March second is the, is the date that we have to pull them out by, but if we have to, and weather permitting, we could get a thirty-day delay on that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, is there any further discussion?
What's the cost on that again? Unless I'm missing it, I don't see. What, what does it cost to the district for this?
Send your notes.
Oh, I don't have that, so, yeah, thank you, don't miss this.
Hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing no more discussion, the motion to move Action Item eleven point two to the regular board for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this, this motion. Joyce Ellis McNeil.
Uh, no at this time until we get the information on Ms. Perry and Ms. Green is looking for, that we are looking for. And I would like to know a little, a little bit more about it.
Okay. Ms. Green.
Yes, because we're under a time restraint, so yes, it's something we have to do.
Okay. Ms. Laura McIntyre.
Yes, but I, I am with Joyce McNeil. I would like to see this, this information in a timely matter before we have to, to ultimately vote on it, please.
Okay. Ms. Vera Perry.
Yes, but I, and I'm hoping when I requested that, that it's understood, that I wanted the information brought back before we have our board meeting next week.
Does a form have to be filled out for that? And wait the thirty days?
I'm sorry, you asked me?
We can't hear you.
Does a form have to be filled out for that? And you can take up to thirty days, or is that something that's different?
Just one second, we're taking a roll call vote to discuss, we passed the discussion portion of this. But Ms. Green, did you have a question as it pertains to these tanks being removed? We are in the middle of a roll call.
I can wait after the roll call, if you like, it doesn't matter. I can wait.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Adrian Walker.
Yes, but again, with the same concerns that Ms. Perry, Ms. McIntyre, and Ms. McNeil have shared about more information.
Okay. Ms. Diana Wright. And myself, Carol McIntosh, we all had the same concerns. I'm voting yes, but I would like to see that information brought to the board. The motion passes, six yes, one no.
Board President, before you go on, can I ask a couple clarifying questions, just from my notes? So, by next week, the board would like to know whether or not, under Superintendent Tuwab or Superintendent Lopez, Lopez, whether or not this was already approved under those two superintendents. Was that the request?
Yes, that was what I've been asking.
Okay. Was there another request? Because that's all I have in my notes thus far.
Is Mole still on?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you remember what we're talking about?
Agly, and I'm wondering if it came under Weatherspoon, but I would have to refer back.
Okay, okay. This was recent, it wasn't Weatherspoon. This was like last spring.
Okay. I'll, I'll go back through the board packets, if you're thinking last spring. I'm thinking it's longer than that, because last spring, we've been in a pandemic.
Right, but we still had meetings, because this had to do with, if my memory serves me, it was the tanks at, which I'm not, I didn't notice where these were, but it was the tanks at where the buses are, are.
If I may.
Have the buses.
Right, you guys approved the tanks, the upper, the, the above-ground tanks. Do you remember that?
Maybe that's what, maybe that's what it was. So it's two separate tanks. If you can, just research that, but okay, yeah, okay.
I also had a question. So if, if we're making sure that we're getting information about this, am I going to have my question answered about the number of people, the number of scholars in the program?
Yes, ma'am. You'll have, you'll have that this week as well. You'll have that before, before next board meeting as well, yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I find it interesting that people are really concerned about a hundred thousand dollars for tanks, and this, you know, his salary is half of that, but. Go ahead.
So, so not to discredit your question, I understood your question, and I wrote your question down in the notes, and to make sure that you have that answer, I was just seeking clarity on what board members were asking for this particular action, because I was not clear on this particular action, so that I could get the information back to the board members.
Thank you, Superintendent Stewart. Thank you, Ms. Donprey.
Before we go on, Board President, was that the only request for this particular item? Because that's all I have in my, in my notes, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what needs to get back to the board.
Yes, I think, I, I think, I think so, so if I'm clear, I think what the board is asking, because we do remember some action being ta, taken as it pertains to these type of tanks, we need to find out, did we do some work as, as it pertains to tank removal? Was it above ground or lower ground? You know, what scope of work did that clear? You know, we don't want to be double, you know, double-charged, or did somebody else charge us prior to? Did they just bid to do above-ground tanks? I think we need all that information.
I am clear, thank you. I'm clear on the request.
Thank you. Are you, is that it, Superintendent Stewart?
Yes, ma'am, I, I am clear on the request, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now we'll be moving to Board Committee of the Whole. Action Item twenty-one point twelve Approval of Danielle Brown's Dedication.
President McIntosh. Secretary Green was trying to ask a question, and I don't know if he wants that question or how you were going to do that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Green, did you have something you wanted to say?
The question that I asked about filling out the form for the information.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, I just was wondering, but she kind of answered it, when she said they'll have it, um, by next meeting, so the form is not, they're not required to fill out the form, and it could take up to thirty days. I got it, I got it. That's why I didn't say the, thank you, Ms. Perry.
Okay, thank, very right, very so much. Now we'll move on to Action Item twenty-one point twelve Approval of Danielle Brown's Dedication. At this time, I will call upon Ms. Ellis McNeil to present action to the board. Ms. McNeil.
Yes, can you hear me pretty good?
Yes, ma'am.
I seek your approval to move Action Number twenty-one twelve Approval of Danielle Brown Dedication to the regular board meeting on February the seventeenth, twenty-one twenty-one for approval.
A move.
Second. Oh, I was, okay, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have seconded, because I'm directing the meeting.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a quick, go, go ahead, Danielle.
Can we just explain exactly what this dedication will be, just for the public record, and so people to know, and so I'll know, because I don't know either.
Okay, Ms. Ellis, do you want to address this?
Kiñella Dobson and I have reached out and we're looking at something to honor Danielle Brown, and we were seeking a classroom or somewhere in the school. Once this get approval, then with the committee, community that's working with Kiñella Dobson, we'll take it from there, they'll take it from there, how it's going to be done when we get the room approval. So right now, we're just trying to, you know, and I don't know how much you guys know about Danielle Brown, but she has, I, I mean, she, she's passionate to me, what the work that she has done, and I work with her. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, I just didn't understand what you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that is what that whole process is about, is honoring Danielle Brown.
Okay, so we just don't know exactly what it'll be at this time?
No, we're just trying to get to preliminary, and then, um, Ms. Danielle Green, hopefully we all can work together with Kiñella Dobson now, as a group, and do something just to keep her memorialized and keep her work well known. So then I would, we'll come back to the board, and I'm quite sure you had a good relationship with Danielle Brown as well, and you're writing this stuff, so then we'll come back and those, and all this work together as a team, hopefully, and create some type of ceremony involving our boards and stuff, and that's why I'm seeking your approval, so we can come back in as an educational group and give her the honor that we would like for her to have.
I agree, I agree, and I'm glad to see this, because I do have a personal and professional relationship with Ms. Brown, so I'm glad, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry, did you have a question or a comment?
No, she answered it, thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there is no more discussion, the motion to move Action Item twenty-one twelve to the regular board meeting for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Joyce Ellis McNeil, sorry, am I skipping over somebody, was somebody saying something before we went into vote? Okay. Joyce Ellis McNeil.
Yes.
Danielle Green.
Yes.
Laura McIntyre.
Yes.
Vera Perry.
Yes.
Adrian Walker.
Yes.
Diane, Diana Wright.
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh. The motion passes seven yes, seven, the motion passes, the yeses have it. Thank you, Ms. Ellis McNeil. Action, we'll move on to Action Item twenty-one thirteen Flint Board of Education Committee Assignments, February twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. At this time, I will present this action item. I seek your approval to move Action Item twenty-one point thirteen Flint Board of Education Committee Assignments, February twenty twenty-one, January twenty twenty-two, to the regular board meeting on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one for approval.
A move.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. It is, it has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd like that. I, yeah, President McIntosh, I think before I'd requested to be the representative for the Flint Cultural Center Corporation, are those, have these all been decided and in set in stone?
I'm against that request as well.
Yeah, well, I, well, yes, because, and that's what I was speaking to her, I spoke to her about that, Ms. Wright, is usually the president, the superintendent, and Ms. Wright was taking up the other mantle, because she asked me first, and she was on that board prior to, involved in the work that we were already invested in. So I told Ms. Wright that I would honor her request.
Oh, it's, your name is down there.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Your name, Carol.
Well, usually, my name is, usually I'm involved, too, it was me and Ms. Wright, and then it would be the superinten, it would be, well, actually, let me see, it was me and Ms. Wright.
But this is a little bit different. This is a representative to the actual Cultural Center Board. Mrs. Ramsdale held that position for several years before, the longest, when she was on the board.
Oh, this is just for the Cultural Center for?
Correct, that's what I was requesting, the, I requested the other as well, but I requested the Cultural Center representative.
Is that only one person can be a representative for that, Ms. Wright?
That's only one person.
Okay.
So that's why I was asking, because they kind of work together, so that's why I was saying I requested um to be the Cultural Center rep and to continue on the other one where there's a group as well.
Okay, and I do remember that, okay, Ms. Laura, is it any way that we can um maybe let Ms. Wright fill that spot since she's already been involved? You're muted, you're muted, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I keep, it keeps going back and forth, um I said yes, of course, I think that would, she would be a wonderful continuation addition. Then I was confused about the library, we don't have a, no longer have to have somebody on the library, is that correct?
No. Because we're no, we don't, we we have nothing to do with the library now, we just, they um, we we get an opportunity to um place people on there, we have that vote, but no, we no longer we sew that off.
Okay, just, I'm just clarifying, yep.
Okay, that's fine, you're fine, Ms. McIntosh, go ahead, Mr. Walker, were you saying something?
Yeah, I just had, I just had a question, um as a new board member, I was looking at um all the committees, and I think all of them are great. Um I was wondering, have the board ever um ventured down uh maybe an advisory committee within the legislative space? Um I'm just thinking about all the activity that happens at the at the state and at the federal level as it relates to different um, you know, uh whether it's funding or anything else that impacts us as a local school district. And I I remember back to our budget meeting, uh we had, I believe, a line item for lobbyists that was ten thousand, so I just didn't know how that work was being informed and if the um board has ever thought about a a legislative advisory uh committee. And just wanted clarification on that.
May I, may I respond to that?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Wright, please do. Um, one of the things that happens with the representative to the Genesee County uh Association of School Boards, they become more involved in those kinds of activities um because they have a group that deals with uh legislation, they they actually give the board representative updates on legislation, and you know, Mrs. McIntyre can get as involved as she wants to with that, uh including represent, being a representative for different uh committees related to uh school legislation, so uh because, but that's one of the, one of the vehicles to get more involved is through the County Board Association.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, um trustee Wright and Walker, is this the meeting that we went, uh we attended for the Genesee uh inter-meeting, uh where they head off the district?
That's, that's the one.
Yeah, I'm in contact with, I think it's uh President James Walker, uh James Jones. And he was saying that there are some classes that the new board member would have to take, you know, because I'm trying to get to the state uh at the state level, and uh you might want to reach out to him because, you know, M A S B have some classes that we as new board members must take before we start to trying to get to these different levels. And so he kind of educated me in that area, and I have taken about three or four to class through M A S B. And they got some classes coming up February the nineteenth through the twenty-first that the new board members you might want, we can look at and take them and get with uh Monica and see if we can get you taking it, but those are going to be the requirement that we take these classes, especially those one hundred series.
Yeah, I'm signed up for the uh one on the twenty-four first, thank you.
Yeah.
I have, I have a question, um given the unusual circumstances of um Mr. Walker coming on board and 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 welcome, I'm not trying to, you know, uh be shady about this at all, but it's like you, we had these discussions about these um these committee assignments and also the Genesee County Association of School Board uh assignment before you were involved, and I know your expertise and your interest in legislative matters, is there some way we as a board could get Mr. Walker, I I know that I'm the liaison and Joyce is the alternative, but um you know, he, Mr. Walker wasn't a possibility at the time, um is there some way to reassign that maybe?
And and Ms. McIntosh, if I'm, if I might add, um I'm I'm more than happy, again, I don't, I don't want to uh, you know, uh go over something that has already been decided. I'm more than happy to work with you in that capacity and um, you know, gain insight from what's going on within the space and and maybe we can have a dialogue about that. I'm I'm happy to do that.
I'm just, yeah, and I'm just opening it up as a possibility, you know, I don't want to, uh I I would love to you know, we we've all have plenty of work on our plate and we can share the responsibilities, and like I said, because of your qualifications and because of your interest, I'm, you know, you know, uh open to, you know, you can, you know what I'm saying, like uh refiguring the the organization. You know, or opening up that possibility, I don't even know if it's possible because we've already voted on it and stuff, but maybe you and I could have a a meeting and a discussion, uh because there's, there's plenty of committees and work to be involved in.
I'm happy to do that.
Love, love, love your help and your expertise for sure.
Yep, I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to do that.
And we can also get with Monica and see what is open and see in what capacity, you know, other board members or we'd like to serve that have not, the spots have not been filled, but I'd also like to uh clarify that there will be a change in the um committee chart for Ms. Diana Wright to serve on the Flint Cultural Center Committee. Um that'll be a change to uh page fifty, the packet on page fifty-four.
So, I got, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Ms. Perry.
So I got a question, so are these two, okay, right here it says Flint Cultural Center Corporation Board of Trustees, and it has uh Carol McIntosh, so now is there another committee? Ms. Wright?
No, the one that is in discussion with um, the one that's looking at the properties, that was a committee, an ad hoc committee that we developed last year, um that was Ms. McIntosh, myself, and Kendall. And I think Casey was a part of it, yeah.
So that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
And this one, because they kind of go together.
Okay, yeah, I remember that, okay.
Are there any other ad hoc committees that we don't know about?
That's, that's the only one that I'm aware of.
That's, is there a reason why it's not? I I don't know.
Well, well, because it was, it was really a developmental group working with several other entities concerning some properties that we were trying to deal with at the time, and so it wasn't like a official committee until this work came about, and that's how we all ended up being assembled together. And that was work being discussed with, like I said, Kendall because he's our legal, people over at the FIA, some community people and different things of that nature, basically discussing which way we were going to go in the cultural center area.
Well, can I, may I add, Ms. McIntosh?
Yes, right, please do. The point of the committee, Ms. McIntyre, was, well, initially, I don't know, you know, because I think it has to be revisited. Um was to take the whole idea of figuring out what to do with all of these buildings off the superintendent's plate. And so, so that the superintendent would focus more on the other operations of the district, because trying to figure out what to do with those twenty-two buildings is quite a job, so we were supposed to begin to work at researching and figuring out, you know, what we could do to, you know, get get some of these buildings taken care of and come back and make recommendations um to the board. It just so happened that it started with the um Whittier Central Campus because we were getting so many complaints from the community, as well as other uh partners in that area about that particular building. So um we were, so the initial focus of that ad hoc committee was, what are we going to do about the Whittier Central Campus? And so as a result of that, that's when, that's the first charge that the an ad hoc committee was looking at, and we met with um all of the other entities in that, in the culture center, and we had started conversations about how to um, you know, make that property uh better for the community, because we were getting a lot of complaints. And um because the the college was not happy, the other cultural center uh uh entities were not happy, the neighborhood was not happy, and so the group that was meeting uh included all of those entities and some neighborhood groups from that area, and it just so happened that we got stuck during the pandemic, and we were right at the point where the Harvard Group wanted to come and talk to the board and the cultural center group, and that's kind of where it left off. But it has now picked up again, and uh I don't know if any of you have spoken with the Harvard Group, but they have some ideas about what to do with that property as well, so nothing has been decided, everything comes to the board. Uh but that was the point of the ad hoc committee.
That's, thank you for that, that update, I am really troubled by this so-called ad hoc committee that's it's, it's kind of operating rogue, um I, you know, that, which is why I wanted to be really clear, are, so this is the only ad hoc committee that's out there, there aren't any other ones that I don't know about, are there?
You know, Mrs. um McIntyre, I I wouldn't say that this committee operated rogue because it was a committee that was voted on by the board. So the only thing we need to do is to uh maybe add it to the list and bring it back, so, you know, just maybe it was an oversight that it wasn't added.
Or maybe, yeah, maybe I misspoke by saying rogue, but I meant.
Because we haven't even met since the pandemic, so.
You haven't?
No, nope, have not met since the pandemic, so that's why I say it's not, nothing has happened since the pandemic, no meetings, nothing until recently, when the um Harvard Group.
There was a meeting on Monday, was there not? No, so there's been abs, there's been no meetings discussing?
Not with this ad hoc committee, no.
Well, not with this ad hoc committee, but have there been meetings to discuss?
No meetings that I have been a part of.
To discuss this property, the cultural center and the Harvard Group, no?
The Harvard Group has, to my understanding, they've reached out to all of you through mail to try to share information, but there, I have not met with anybody regarding this.
So if if you, if I may, can I add clarity to the the Harvard Group, so the um uh the the gentleman, didn't know he was associated with the Harvard Group, I'm I'm now connecting dots. Uh the gentleman, uh Ian, and I'm trying to remember his last name, um reached out to the district wanting to take a tour of uh the um central Whittier property. Um Mr. Chapman um allowed uh him and some other people to tour the property. And after they toured the property, or after anyone tours any of our properties, um the next step is for them to submit a proposal. And once they submit a proposal, the proposal then comes to um, the proposal then comes to uh the superintendent and the board president to to review and decide whether or not it'll go before the board. Uh Mr. Ian, after one of the board workshops, sent an email um stating that he had toured the building and he would like to have, um he would like to further discuss um ideas around what um he he, his thoughts for the central Whittier campus. He also sent me an email, um he sent me an email and he sent board members an email and 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 a board member, um I think it was board member Ellis McNeil, I'm not sure, forwarded that that email that he sent to the board members, forwarded it to me. Um I responded to Mr. Ian, um to the email that he sent me and told him that I was open to meeting with him and discussing what it was that he, you know, his thoughts, his ideas, and what it was that he had, he wanted to uh to do with uh the central Whittier campus. Um it was a meeting with myself, Mr. Chapman, um the meeting was scheduled for this past Monday. Um however, over the weekend, I became privy to um some information that uh uh this group had met with um the, what was shared with me, this group had met with the past president of the board. And so on Monday, I asked uh Mo, I said, okay, Mo, since they have met with the past president of the board, I think we need to bring Board McIntosh in so that she's aware of what's going on as we figure out and listen what it is that this group would like to do and then have them to submit a proposal to be entertained by the board. Um it was last minute on Monday, um board member, Board President McIntosh um was not able to join, and so Mo reached out to Vice President Perry to join me in the meeting. In the meeting, I learned that Mr. Ian was a part of the Harvard Group and their thoughts or ideas around what they would like to do for, to the central Whittier campus. At the end of the meeting, I asked Mr. Ian if he could submit a proposal um that would then be submitted to uh to myself and to Board President to review. Uh Mr. Ian um stated that he and his team would get together and would submit a proposal. And I I I haven't received a proposal yet, and so I think that is the meeting that you were speaking of that happened this past Monday um Board Member McIntosh.
And I was absolutely available to be at that meeting, I received the email link at two forty and it, I was told the meeting was scheduled at three thirty. I got off work at two thirty, so if I would have had knowledge that it was a meeting, I very well could have been there. But Monica discussed it with me and it was apparently an oversight, but I'm going to be honest, I was very unhappy about it. Is there any further discussion?
I got a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Green.
Um so um Superintendent, when you said they informed you that they toured the the buildings, who gave them permission to tour the building, and how does that process work?
No, no, no ma'am, um so they reached out to the district wanting to tour um the central Whittier campus. Um we granted them the, in in anyone who reaches out to us wanting to tour any of our properties, we do allow them to 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 tour our property. Uh Mr. Chapman goes along with them on the tour, they tour the property with Mr. Chapman. And then at the end of the tour, we had not heard anything else from them until um after a board workshop um uh January twenty-something, I can't remember the exact.
Last week.
Workshop, after the first.
It was after the last workshop.
Yeah, uh Mr. um Ian um sent an email, he sent an email to the board members and he sent an email to me stating that um he, they were interested in the property. Um and so that's when this this next meeting happened with with um on Monday, this past Monday, Monday.
Okay, so.
We're now waiting on a proposal from them.
Right, okay, so a tour consists of walking around the outer, outside of the buildings, or what does a tour consist of? I mean, what exactly is a tour? Is it wide, or do they just stay outside and, you know, what what does that look like?
Um it is, it is outside and can be inside, depending on the condition of the building. Um uh some of our buildings, the condition is safe for people to go. Um, uh, some of our buildings, the condition is safe for people to go inside and tour. Some of our buildings, it is not safe for them to go inside. So it depends on the condition of the building.
So I'm speaking specifically to Central and Whittier. So those are the ones we're talking about right now? What about those? How, is that an inside tour or was that just outside?
Mr. Uh, Mr. Chapman, can you speak to the tour?
Yes, we toured the inside of both buildings, just as, as, uh, Ms. Stewart said, just in the safe areas. Because it's a little rough in there. Um, and then we walked around the campus a little bit as well.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Was somebody else trying to ask a question?
Yeah, I, um, there's a lot of information you're talking about, about Central and, uh, Whittier. But, uh, my concern, are there other proposal out there? Because it's just not, that area is complaining about these buildings. And I know on the north side, they got somebody want buildings. And, uh, we just came with Perkins and all here on the Culture Center. And we got people that looking at these building and probably, uh, have proposal uh, to look. And we need to, even though they not as high level as these people with money, but we need to look at those proposals that's coming in that we know that people can securities building. And are we looking at every proposal and giving them that same privilege?
After Mrs. Superintendent, I'd like to make another comment, Mr. President.
I'd just like to have that question answered. You know, we have other proposals out there and are we giving them that same kindness? And walk through and giving them an opportunity. Um, keep in mind that, you know, most of the people live in Flint. Uh, cannot compete with these big firms and stuff. And we don't want them to be outbid it because we, uh, because not by our own defect that we done had so much taken from us. And we don't want to deny our community, uh, an opportunity to be a part in this process because they're competing with high firms. So I just want to know that when we get these other proposal, o- other proposal, that's sharing that same sympathy and empathy that the neighbors are complaining and mine is complaining. Uh, so why don't, I just want to make sure that we make sure that everything is fair. And there are some proposals out there and that we need to be involved in it because the community is relying upon us, uh, to make these decisions.
Uh, Board Member Ellis McNeil, any proposal, any proposed, proposal that I receive um, according to, uh, to the, the board policy, um, I share with, um, I share with, uh, board president during our one-on-one meetings. And then from, from our one-on-one meetings, it is determined whether or not um, it is presented to, to, to board members for, for further action.
Is there any other comments or discussion?
I have a comment.
And I have a question after Ms. Wright, please.
Okay, now, um, McIntyre, go ahead, Ms. Wright, you have the floor.
And I guess, you know, I think the, the discussion with the, um, Harvard Group uh, is not to, uh, make the need for, you know, responding to any other community communities issues with, you know, closed buildings. It's not to take away from any of those buildings. But the Harvard, uh, Group did bring a proposal, you know, it's been, uh, it's been more than a year ago that this actually started out as a class project with a group of students from Harvard that grew or developed into something that could potentially happen uh, for our district. It comes along with something that we don't have, which is the ability to, uh, seek funding for restructuring or, or, or development of the property. It comes with their, uh, research into getting historical designations for the building. Um, and the last time I spoke with Ian, uh, which was before all of the, uh, which was, like I said, during the pandemic. I think I talked to him maybe once and shared that I was no longer a part of the leadership and suggested that he email, email the superintendent and all of the other board members. But the goal is to try to do something for the city with that property, to redevelop it, get some historical designations for the building and to get the district some much-needed cash as well. So, um, but, you know, here again, none of this can happen without board approval. And I strongly suggested that he do a presentation for the board. Because here again, this is, this is a group from afar trying to, trying to do something to help us. And so, uh, you know, it's up to the board whether they want to look further into it, you know? So it's not, uh, but it, it sounds like a wonderful idea, but it's, it's all a lot of ifs. A whole lot of ifs.
Were you done, Ms. Wright?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Ms. McIntyre?
Yeah, I, it, it does sound like a wonderful idea. It would just be nice if the information were more forthcoming and the board had a little bit more, you know, information, more specifics about it. Um, and, you know, I would actually like to get the community's involvement in this considering the historic significance. And, you know, it's great that this is a consideration for the city, but we're, we're the, the school board. I, I'm concerned about the consideration of the school. I mean, also the city as well, but not at the expense of the school board or at the expense of the community schools. Um, so I would really like to have this process be more transparent to both the board and the community itself. Um, I don't know how this is gonna happen. I really hope that we don't have more hidden ad hoc committees. Um, that maybe we get this more officially designated or there's some process by which, you know, more people can get involved. And I'm not just talking about members of the board, but also the community, like I said, because this is very significant to us. That being said, I'm gonna leave it, leave that there. I, I still have a lot of questions and concerns about everything that's transpired.
You know, President, I, I do want to, I, I take issue with, um, the, 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 uh, the, the hint that these are hidden committees. This is, this was not a hidden committee. This was a board-appointed committee which operated until the pandemic and some of the issues are coming up. Now, um, it should have been included in the committee assignments, but I would like for.
Well, that's what I mean by hidden.
To refrain from referring to this as a hidden group or a group that's not being transparent because that is.
It's not on the list. I mean.
Exactly. And I, and, and Ms. McIntyre, I didn't create the list. So, and, uh, so I just.
That's all I meant. I wasn't inferring anything.
We're referring to, uh, these kinds of things because this is not a hidden committee.
Okay.
We can debate semantics. Um, I'm still in the middle of making a comment, though. Uh, Ms. Wright, uh, interrupted the, the comments that I was making.
Okay, we're sorry, Porter. Ms. Ms. McIntyre has the floor. Please, Ms. McIntyre, continue. Let's be mindful, though, because we got a lot of packet to finish. But go ahead, lady. Go ahead, lady.
I said I was about done with that and I was moving on. The only thing else that I wanted to address was the one uh, I see here that the board members did get an email from another individual on January twenty-ninth, around the same time that the Harvard Group uh, gave their email and already about, uh, about another property. Um, a proposal for another one of our vacant school properties. And I'm wondering why that wasn't responded to, or we don't have information about any response to that. And yet the, there's already been a meeting? You know, the Monday meeting with the Harvard Group? And I'm just wondering about this, this one other proposal. And the reason why I'm being vague about it is because I'm not sure I can name individuals or the groups or whatever, but I, everyone's clear about what I'm talking about.
Since you're talking, go ahead and tell it.
Excuse me. Do we need to know who all was in the me, is that necessary or important information? Your point is, Ms. Laura, you want, what action do you want us to take as, as it pertains to the conversation that we had?
Well, given that we've extended the courtesy of already meeting with the Harvard Group and having a meeting on Monday, has, has there been the same? When we talk about courtesies extended to our local groups, this individual and his, uh, his nonprofit organization has sent an email and a proposal. What's been, has that been responded to? I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering if anything has happened on that because I, I haven't, I, I don't have that. I'm not privy to that information.
Board President, I have a question.
Um, just one sec. Just one second. Ms. Perry, I was after McIntyre.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Ms. Ms. McIntyre, um, all the sale of our properties, to my understanding, because we have not sold the properties since I have been on this board that I can recall. Well, all the sales are supposed to come before the board. Now, my, uh, we're, we're supposed to have a meeting with Kendall concerning our vacant properties and the sale of our vacant properties coming this Friday. I did express to Kendall for, uh, the record to the board that all vacant properties be listed. And I'm waiting on, and I was also waiting on the, um, appraisal, the updated appraisal information before we got to selling off stuff. I'd like to know what it's worth. So I was waiting, hoping we could see something like that before we start actually selling, disposing of buildings. But, um, I, we were suppo, I'm supposed to speak with Kendall and I expressed to Kendall that I would like for our community to have first dibs. And then after our community, if they do, don't have satisfactory visits in, then we break, branch out on a national level with my hopes and Kendall said we can maybe make that happen or we should be able to make that happen. So I just wanted you to know, um, you, uh, Board Member McIntyre and McNeil, that I am thinking of, of the community while we move forward in dispersing of these vacant buildings.
But my question was, we've, we, so we've met, we actually had a meeting Monday with the Harvard Group and the outside. Like what, what's happening with the, the other individual? Has there been, has there been? And it's not necessarily to you, President McIntosh. I'm asking, has there been any response? Given that we've responded to Mr. Ian, has there been a response to this other individual?
I have not responded to anybody. Uh, Superintendent, uh, Stewart, have you responded to anyone?
So, we, we, we have not responded to Ian. I've asked Ian to submit a proposal so that that proposal can be shared. I don't have a proposal. Um, I understand that, you know, you're, you're inquiring about another group and, and whether or not we have, we have looked at the proposal. I'm not sure which group you're speaking to, um, because.
Can I say it out loud then?
Okay, Ms. 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 McIntyre, is this something that, if you have some information that you'd like to question, uh, Superintendent Stewart on, is this something that you can write down and pass this to Monica and allow her to, um, do research and get back with you and give you her informed answer as to who she's responded to and heard from?
So look, I'm just ask, yeah, I, that's, that is, that is possible. I'm just asking because of being sort of surprised about the the, the meeting on Monday. And I'm just asking if there's been any other movement forward with this other, with this other. I mean, that's all, that's what I'm asking. It's, it's, and, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm really confused with the answer. Like, we, you haven't spoken to Ian or you have? Because I thought there was a meeting on Monday, so.
Uh, I'm sorry. Yes, there was a meeting on Monday to get more information about what it was that they wanted to do. At the end of the meeting, I requested for a proposal. They didn't, they do not have a proposal. I'm waiting on a proposal now, something in writing, black and white, proposal of what it is that they want to do and the, um, and how much they're going to purchase the property for so that it can be submitted to the board. I don't have that proposal in hand. All I have is just an overall big thought of what it is that they want to do.
So have you had a similar meeting with the other people?
I don't know who the other people are. So, so can I make a recommendation? If you could, if you.
We all have the email. I'm just.
Point of order, we're so far off of what we're supposed to be.
We are.
About the board appointments. If that discussion has to be had, then let that discussion be had between the Superintendent and Mrs. McIntyre. But we're holding up the, the business of the board on this stuff. And that's not even what we're supposed to be talking about.
Excuse me, but that's what I just proposed, Ms. Perry. I'm sorry that we're held up, but I just proposed that to Ms. McIntyre. Ms. Green?
It's just a simple yes or no question. I think what Ms. McIntyre is asking, has anybody else been extended courtesy to being contacted, who reached out? Because I've had some people also that I forwarded to the, um, administration. But just has anybody else been given the same courtesy that this other group is giving? It's just a yes or no question. It shouldn't take this long. She keeps asking it and it seem like it's being missed. And I've been there, Ms. McIntyre. I get it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. The business of the board, by the way.
It is. Order, order. Wait a minute. Order. Ms. Green has the floor. Let's, let's have some order. Go ahead, Ms. Green. You have the floor.
It's a simple yes or no question. And I think it's to the superintendent. Has anybody else been reached out to, contacted, responded to in reference to the Whittier Central Properties? Because I mean, it seems like we're showing favoritism to this other group. And it's just clarification, yes or no question. And we gone by now. I'm just a little confused myself. I'm, I'm confused too.
So I thought I answered that a while ago and I stated anyone who reaches out, they want a tour of any of our properties, we grant them an opportunity to have a tour of our properties and to submit a proposal. Anyone who reaches out and wants to talk to me, I grant them the opportunity to talk to me. And at the end of the conversation, I still ask for a proposal that can be submitted to board president. That whether that's somebody from the, from the central group, whether that's somebody from the north side, the south side, the east side, the west side, I grant everybody that opportunity. And at the end, I still say, please submit a proposal that will be given to the board.
The yes or no?
With the Ian group.
Okay, let's have some order. We're not getting a yes or no. She gave you.
Alright, I see.
So, that's what it is. Alright, we're, are we, Lord have mercy, we're on twenty-one point thirteen, seeing no further discussion. Is there any more discussion? Ms. Laura, we're gonna have her give you any information she got. She said she would. Uh, seeing no further discussion, we gonna have a row, I think we're at a roll call vote. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Monica. Am I still on item twenty-one point thirteen? Do anybody know? I'm on the roll call vote, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Joyce Ellis McNeil. Ms. McNeil?
I, I mean, I'm just so back forward. I don't even know what to say. Could you get go to the next person right now?
Okay, this is where we're at. This is where we're at. We're, we're on action item twenty-one thirteen. We're approving the board committee's assignments for February twenty, twenty-one through January twenty-twenty-two. The regular board meeting on, we're moving into the regular board meeting for February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for approval. That is for the committees that we have set up. The information has been sent out to you as to what boards or committees you'll be sitting on.
Okay, I got you. Oh, yes, yes.
That's why, I know we had a lot of, uh, discussion. I kind of got threw off too. So as I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Ms. Joyce Ellis McNeil says.
Yes.
Okay, Danielle Green?
Yes.
Laura McIntyre?
No, for this reason that this has not been a straightforward process and there still are some mistakes on this sheet. And I also think that we need to have. And I also think that we need to have better representation with the cultural center or different rep, or something, because this isn't adequate.
Okay, Ms. Vera.
May I ask what that means?
Wait a minute, wait, we're in the middle of a roll call vote. Let's finish our roll call vote. Ms. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Uh, Mr., um, Adrian Walker, I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, you're good, yes.
Ms. Diane, Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh. Yes, ma'am. And myself, Carol McIntosh. Yes, like Ms. Wright, with the corrections that we discussed or any information that has been asked for upon the, uh, handing over that information, yes. And that vote passes, uh, six yes, one no. Ms. Wright, did you have something you wanted to say, ma'am?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Okay, we're still on, on the board committee of a whole. We're continuing to action twenty-one point fourteen, gifts and donations. At this time, I'll call upon Ms. Stewart to present action to the board. As I, Ms. Stewart?
I seek your approval to move action item twenty-one point fourteen, gifts and donations to the regular board meeting on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for approval.
For gifts and donations, we need some, could we get a?
Move.
Support.
Thank you. Um, it has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion as it pertains to the gifts and donations? Seeing there is no discussion, the motion to move action item twenty-one point fourteen to the regular board for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve the motion. Joyce Ellis McNeil?
Yes.
Danielle Green? Ms. Green, you muted, I think.
I'm, I'm muted.
You said yes, okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Laura McIntyre?
Yes.
Ms. Vera Perry? Yep. Mr. Adrian Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh. And we did have all yeses, I'm sorry, right? Yes, thank you. Uh, the motion passes, seven yes. Uh, continuing on to action item twenty-one point fifteen, which is, is this a type, hold on, wait a minute. Yep. Another action item twenty-one fifteen, gifts and donations.
I seek your approval. Thank you. I seek your approval to move action item twenty-one point fifteen, gifts and donations to the regular board meeting on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for approval.
So moved.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no more discuss, seeing there is no discussion. The motion to, seeing there is no discussion. The motion to move action item twenty-one fifteen to the regular board meeting for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Joyce Ellis McNeil?
Yes.
Danielle Green? Laura McIntyre?
Yes.
Ms. Vera Perry? Yes. A, Mr. Adrian Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, Ms. Carol McIntosh, yes. The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. We'll now move to the academics committee of a whole portion of the meeting. We're going to be on action item twenty-five point four, authorization to purchase approved items from the amended consolidation application. At this time, I will call upon Mr. Jones to present action to the board.
Hello, board members. Hope you all are well. We're going to defer twenty-five point four to twenty-five point six to Ms. Kiana Murphy. Ms. Murphy?
Hi, good evening, board.
Good evening.
I seek your approval to move action item twenty-five point four, authorization to purchase approved items from the amended consolidated application to the regular board of education meeting on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for approval.
So moved. It has been properly moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, um, I would really appreciate in the future, getting this information in a more timely. I just got this this morning. Um, there's not enough time, in my opinion, to properly go through everything, so I'm, I'm just gonna be vote, I, this is just very frustrating to me that I have very little in writing, very little information, and it's just seems like it's not uh, best practices for board members moving forward. I would appreciate more information with more lead time.
I think it needs an explanation. Um, this was not the fault of our district. There was a techno, techno problem out of the state of Michigan, out of Lansing. And they, it didn't come till the last minute. So just to let you know that this is not the Flint schools' problem.
I know that. I'm just saying, but I'm still not, you know, it still doesn't, the laws of physics still apply to the timeframe.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing there is no more discussion.
Excuse me?
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Mac, uh, since we've just gotten this information so late, um, it would probably help if we just give, uh, just a little brief discussion what's in it, because that was a hundred ninety-two page document. And just being fair to the new board members, I know everybody else has got it all down packed. But, uh, just be respectful for us to just say, but this item twenty-five point four is about this and that, just for two or three sentences or more. And it's to get us an idea of what we're voting for. And, and I think just on a fair request, is this, is this okay?
Ms. Kiana, can you give us any, um, meat and potatoes to this?
And I think that would help us when we get documents so late and that would kind of give us some idea.
Yes.
Absolutely, uh, Board President McIntyre. Um, this is our amended consolidated application, so every year, twice a year, the district receives an allocation for Title One, Title Two, Title Four, and Title Three immigrants. And so because we are a, a district that serves students who, uh, unfortunately live in poverty, then we receive an allocation from the federal government um, for our Title One students that we identify. And so each building has a Title One allocation, so what you have is the building budgets. So buildings have a school improvement team and they develop a school improvement plan and identify the academic needs that the students have that they serve. And then they develop a budget to meet those needs based on what the students, uh, need to consist of. So one of the things we'll see consistently are kindergarten teachers for extended day kindergarten, knowing that additional instructional time is important for our kindergarten students. Uh, intervention time for teachers, intervention materials. There's quite a bit of technology for students to use, uh, in school along with their teachers for supplemental learning opportunities. So all of these items are according to the uses and purposes of Title One, uh, or federal funds.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Ms. Murphy. That really made a big difference. I really appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing there is no further discussion. We did have our motions, right? I'm sorry, you guys. Okay, seeing no further discussion. Um, as I call your, we're gonna take a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes to accept the motion or no to not accept the motion. Joyce Ellis McNeil?
Yes.
Danielle Green?
Yes.
Laura McIntyre?
No, I'm not, I, I need more time. I need more information and I'm just, I'm not gonna be rubber stamping this stuff.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Adrian Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh, yes. The motion passes. Six yes, one no. Next, we will move on to, uh, action item twenty-five point five, authorization to purchase approved items from the amended elementary and secondary school emergency relief, the S R funds formula grant. Mr. John, or Ms. uh, Kiana?
Yes, ma'am. I seek your approval to move action item twenty-five point five, authorization to purchase approved items from the amended elementary and secondary school emergency relief S R formula grant to the regular board meeting on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for approval.
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Walker?
Sorry, I, I had a question. I'll go after, uh.
Okay, it has been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion, Mr. Walker?
Yes, I, I have a clarifying question. Um, as, as I'm looking at these funds, are these the same dollars that are currently tied up at the state level? Within the governor's two billion dollar budget that she set aside, or are these separate funds?
These are separate funds. This was the district's initial S R allocation from the federal government. Uh, I believe Governor Whitmer had, she had a, a different round of funding that we haven't received in district yet. So that, that is a separate matter.
But, but those funds are S R funds as well, correct?
They, yes, they come, um, from the federal government, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing there is none. At this time. Um. At this time. See, there is none. The motion to move action item twenty-five point five to the regular board meeting for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Ms. Joyce Ellis McNeil?
Yes.
Ms. Danielle Green? I'm sorry, Ms. Green, I didn't, I didn't get you. Oh, you muted, but okay, I read your lips. Okay. Ms. Laura McIntyre?
No.
Uh, Ms. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Adrian Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh, yes. Six yes, one no. This motion passes. We're moving on to action item twenty-five point six, Ms. Kiana?
Yes, awesome. I seek your approval to move action item twenty-five point six, authorization to purchase items from the section thirty-one A grant to the regular board meeting on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for approval.
Ms. Danielle says so moved, I think, uh, I don't know. Ms., wait, I don't know if she talking to us.
I'll say it, uh, uh, so moved.
Support.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Seeing there is no discussion, the motion to move action item twenty-five point six to the regular board meeting for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Ms. Joyce Ellis McNeil?
Yes.
Ms. Danielle Green? Ms. Danielle Green?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Laura McIntyre?
Nope.
Ms. Vera Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Adrian Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, Ms. Carol McIntosh, yes. The motion passes, six yes, uh, one no vote. Thank you, Ms. Kiana.
Thank you all.
Before we adjourn, does any board members have any comments?
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Green, you have the floor.
I just want to say, you know, um, with us being individuals on this board, is the level of respect that I think we're losing. Um, questions are being asked that people might not want to answer. But the tone of the responses is negative and is rude and is disrespectful, in my opinion. I just hope and I pray that we will respect each other. Whether the comments or the questions are something you think is stupid, unnecessary, whatever it is. We are all here representing the best we can. Will we agree all the time? Oh, it's obvious we won't, and that's fine. It should be like that. But I'm thinking us as a board, we are definitely owe the level of respect from our employee. And I think to me, it's, it's just a negative tone and it's rude and I just don't like it. And also, um, I just had to get that off my chest so I could sleep tonight, okay? And another thing, I want to know how, um, whoever answered this, it doesn't matter. I've been getting a lot of different calls from, um, people in the community about how the buildings are coming along for the students to return on the twenty-second. And I don't know, you know, if, if I'm getting this the truth or not, so I'm asking and I'm hoping I can get a respectful answer. Or how the buildings are coming along for when our students return. Are we on track? Um, do we need to extend that date from the February twenty-second to, I, I mean, I just need to know just how it's coming along.
If you don't mind, I would love to speak to that. I have visited every building. Uh, or talk, and talked to our, uh, principals. Uh, the buildings are coming along great. Uh, their COVID teams and leadership teams have worked uh, with them to ensure that processes and procedures are in place. When you, when you go and you look at the floors, you see the arrows, you see all of, um, the directions that, that scholars will need. Uh, the PPE is in place. Uh, our kiosk for temperature checks are in place. Um, uh, there's, of course, some of them are being moved to the areas they need to be. But when it, when it comes to, um, Ms. Green, the buildings being ready for scholars. Um, I definitely believe that the buildings will be ready on the twenty-second. Um, I know that, I, I, I also know too that there are some things that are yet en route. Uh, the, the sneeze guards are en route, but they will be in place by the twenty-second. Um, the question about water, uh, water will be, uh, we, we're working on the water right now. We will have water for our scholars. Uh, so I, I would say yes, uh, Ms. Green, that, uh, we, the buildings are, um, now, I would say ninety-nine percent because there are some things that need to be moved. But when you talk about those things being, being moved, um, the, the requests are in, our CSM team knows and they're going to be moved. The, the principals are definitely, uh, telling me that we're, we're ready to go. Uh, just a few minor things that they need to work on. But I think that the buildings are, are looking really well. Um, and we should be ready to go.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Jones?
Let me finish.
Oh, wait. Wait, my, my.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Jones, um, does that include the filters that I spoke about a couple meetings ago on the, um, bosses where the staff is supposed to wash their hands? Does that include the?
Uh, no, I, you know what? I'm gonna have to defer that one to Mr. uh, Mr. Chapman when it comes to those filters.
Okay, Mr. Chat, okay, we, we'll try that again, okay?
Can you speak to that, Mr. Chapman? The, the filters?
I can.
Okay, go ahead.
So I reached out to the city and they're gonna be, be providing us with those filters. Um, they haven't given them to us yet, but the second we get them, we're gonna be installing them.
Okay, so we just don't know when that'll be? We don't know if it'll be before the students go back into the building?
I, I'm guessing it's probably gonna be about a week.
I mean, it, what indicator, what was it? A indicator to guess a week?
Um, because they didn't have enough to give us at the time. They were ordering a few more, they said.
And they said it'll take about a week to get them? Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so are we talking cartridge for the filters or just entirely new filters?
Uh, both. The ones that we, um, already have the cartridge and everything, we're just gonna be replacing the filter.
Okay, and you'll, um, okay, so that update on the third, I wasn't here, I apologize for that. So that's the update on those that we're supposed to get on the, oh, no, we're supposed to get up on the smart fountain. Wouldn't we remember when I asked about this? And I missed, I've asked, I said, I'm saying, I'm holding you to that two weeks, which was the third. Did we ever get anything on that, Mr. Chapman?
Kettering is still, uh, doing their testing right now, so we don't have a response back from Kettering.
For, for, can I, can I jump in and chime in? Board member Green, so, uh, board member Green, um. If you didn't get an email, I apologize. I sent you an email about the, uh, the cartridges that Mister, um. That Mister Chapman just spoke of from his response from the city of Flint. And then, um, I also thought that I sent board members an email with an update. Um, in regards to the, to the water stations. Um, so, uh, the ladies from, from Kettering. Um, stated that we're about, uh, perhaps about two and a half weeks out. Uh, with them finishing their testing. And then, um, uh, one of the ladies also, uh, there was an article in Flintbeat where, uh.
The doctors? Not the ladies, the doctors, right? Is that what you're referring to?
Excuse me. Excuse me, wait a minute. Hold on, Ms. Laura. Ms., uh. Ms. Stewart had the floor speaking, Ms. Green, to her question. Uh, Stewart, please continue.
Thank you. Um, one of the, the doctors from, from Kettering. Um, she, uh, uh, responded to a question from Flintbeat. And there was an article that was in the newspaper yesterday with the timeline. And I sent that to board members, um, today. Um, as a second update, um, to your response about the, about the water stations.
Yeah, okay, yep, I did get those. I think, and the reason I asked, you know, I didn't got twelve texts about them, so I'd like the public to know, and I just wanted you to be on record.
Absolutely.
Question, um, purifiers, are there air purifiers? Are this, is that something that we are going to still have in the buildings or being replaced? Where are we with the air purifier?
Um, I will defer that one to Mister Chapman.
They are also ordered. Um, we're just waiting on a shipment.
Okay, Mister Chapman, let me just say this, so I can sleep tonight again.
Yep.
Questions I asked, um, and I'm struggling with all your responses. It seem kind of vague and ill-informed or uninformed. Um, and I could be wrong. I could be wrong, but Mister Chapman, work with me here. Cause you really kind of gave me the same answer you gave me to the other one, and, and I'm, I'm still confused on that. Okay, you just tell me more specifically, like when you said in a week, I asked you, what are, what are you basing that on? Is it just some information they gave you? Or is this something you put out, I, I mean, I, out of a head? I just don't know.
Which part, Ms. Green?
Both, all of it, everything.
Okay, so the filters?
Both, all of it.
The filters from the city. I spoke with a young lady from the city. And I asked her, um, we needed about two hundred and fifty of the filters and the cartridges. And she, she said she was, uh, going to order them because she did not have enough of them. So she said it would probably take about a week to get them. And I apologize for not giving you the exact date, but that's all I can tell you that she told me.
Let's not do that, let's not do that. But what I'm saying to you, you say there'll be about a week. Once we get them, because it's gonna take time to install, because my concern is that they won't be in place when its children go back into the building. And I know you said we have a lot of sanitizer, but sir. If somebody gets something in the eye or get, need to wash their face, we can't use sanitizer for that. So sir, let's not do the exact date thing. I just need something a little closer to a timeframe. You know, that's all I'm asking. So we say a week for them to get to the city, and then we'll get them and install them. Overall, how much time you thinking?
I would say if we, if I had to give you a timeframe and if we get them next week, we're gonna be installing them next week. All the custodians can install them. They're very simple to install. So.
So the air purifier, a little more clarity on that one.
Okay, I have a question. Are you done, Danielle?
Excuse me, order. No, she wasn't. Mister Chapman, she asked. I believe her question was in reference to the air purification.
Purifiers.
I can get back to you tomorrow, the exact day that they're going to ship to us. I apologize, I don't have the exact day.
That's okay. Do I need to fill out a form and wait up to thirty days for that? Do I need to fill out a form?
No, ma'am, you don't.
Okay, thank you.
You don't need to fill out a form, Ms. Green. I'll, I'll check up if I have to. Is there any other board members?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis McNeil?
Yeah, and then me after Joyce, please.
Yes, ma'am, Ms.
Uh, and I might be kind of repeating something with Danielle Green. When we talk about air purifier, we're talking about the ventilation system. And that, that is gonna be in place, some type of ventilation system. And I'm gonna run to another question that, uh, I got calls on. Parents. Concerned about, um, bathroom monitors.
You going in and out?
Are you speaking?
Doctor Joyce?
Oh, okay. So, uh, we're talking about ventilation when we're talking about air purifying. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And then, parents want to know how they're gonna do the sanitation and bathroom monitoring. Do they have enough people in each, each school to make sure that things are sanitized, wiped? And monitoring, controlling the halls? Those are the things that I'm getting calls about. The parents are concerned how the kids are gonna be eating, who's going to monitor that, and who's gonna be sanitizing. Because we know in previous, before the pandemic, kids didn't even have soap and stuff in the bathroom. And teacher don't have supplies to clean up, so those are some of the concern. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Um, Mister, Mister Chapman, can you respond to Ms. Ellis McNeil?
Yes, the custodians will be sanitizing restrooms, um, quite frequently during the day. Um, they're going to be sanitizing the doorknobs, um, every restroom, um, all touch points. Um, throughout the day.
So, um, with your ventilation, if you don't have the proper, um, equipment to use for ventilation? And if it's not there when school start, what we're gonna do for ventilation?
Ma'am, all the filters for all the boilers for all the rooms have all been changed. They're all brand new filters in every room.
So each school is gonna have an increase in, um, in their janitorial service, because you know, before we didn't have that service. So they don't have to be worried, the teacher don't have to be worried about cleaning and wiping and bringing soap and sanitizer for the kids. Cause I worked in school for six years, and that seemed to be one of my major responsibilities, making sure they had those things. So now the parents are saying, we know for sure that they're gonna have these things.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is, would that complete your questions, uh, Ms. McNeil?
Now, yes, and we are gonna be doing a walk there, so in case the, uh, audience didn't know that some of us are doing a walk through, through the schools.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Ms. Ms. Doc, um, Doctor McInt, Ms. McIntyre?
Um, yeah, so. Uh, it's my understanding, like, just, I have a lot of questions, but just following up just immediately on this question, it's my understanding that Durant Terry Mott. Only has one custodian, so how is this gonna happen to do all the touch, I mean. You know, the, the schools weren't clean under the best of circumstances, and a global pandemic is the worst of circumstances. So, um, I believe Ms. Green asked. Uh, not the last meeting, oh, sorry, not meeting, budget workshop, the previous budget workshop. Teachers were cleaning their own spaces and their own rooms. Has that stopped or are they still? I've had a bunch of questions, because these are questions that have already been asked, that have not been answered. And yet we're still speeding, you know, without breaks towards this reopening of the schools. Uh, Ms. Green asked about the custodial services. And looking at maybe, uh, having a different contract or a contract, you know, re- revising our contract with the custodial. Because they're just aren't adequate, they're not doing, uh, you know, just from teachers and scholars reports of. You know, what's going on in the classrooms currently. Um, so. Are. The schools, are the classrooms still being cleaned by teachers? And I want a definitive answer. I want somebody to come and tell me that the teachers are not having to clean their own spaces. Because that's not what I'm getting reported at this point. Also, there is not P P E available at this point. And I understand that it's the tenth, and we've got a little bit of time and things are, you know, there's still a moving ball, and we're still getting things rearranged. But I want reassurances that when the schools are open, that these things that you say are gonna be in place are indeed in place. Um, I don't, you know, we still don't have filters. And yeah, it's really easy to install filters, but with a bureau, with an administration and a bureaucracy, you know, things aren't as simple as they should be often. Um, also, there's a question, I don't know what this means, but, uh, about sneeze guards. Is there something, there's, I guess, some confusion about sneeze guards, um. Um, and I'm sorry, I'm all over the place, but like I said, we get very little information at the last minute. And very little opportunity to, you know, convene and talk about this and bring it up to the public. This is, this brings back my other concern that's sort of peripherally related to this. I'm still concerned about the fact that nobody from the public has commented in these meetings. And I know that people have been trying, and I know that people have sent emails and sent written comments. So I ask again, for the third time, is there something we can do to make these meetings more accessible to the community? Accessible to the public and more inclusive so that people can participate? Um, because I know that people are trying and that they want to. And the, the lack of questions and public comments is very troubling and disturbing to me. Um, okay, so that's getting back to this, the cleanliness of the classroom. Have the teachers? Been consulted yet? I know we had a survey that indicated that forty-one percent of the families were. Wanted to go back to some type of hybrid model. Uh, I asked previously about. Uh, the, the way that those questions had been operationalized about the qualitative and the quantitative data. Because forty-one percent as a number doesn't mean anything to me. I mean, who knows what they were asked and what the exact question, what the answers were. Um, and that just seems like, or it still seems like a low amount of families and scholars who, who want to go back to some kind of hybrid model. I, I would really request more information on that. Um, and back to teacher input. When, I, I know the answer to this, the teachers have not been asked. So when are the teachers gonna be asked? Is there some way, Mister Jones, uh, that you can maybe, as super, the. Intended, right, Superintendent Jones, maybe ask the teachers what they need? To be prepared to go back, uh, by that timeframe? Can, can, maybe we get some more, I mean, not, I'm not talking about the principals. I'm talking about people that are in the classroom, the teachers that are currently cleaning their own classrooms. And are worried about sneeze guards and P P Es and ventilation. And the people that are, the workers that are actually too afraid to say anything to the administration. Or who are unable to get access to these, these meetings for whatever technical reason.
Hmm, so, um, I, I, I will go further in that action, uh, Ms. McIntyre. We did create, uh, COVID teams, uh, for all the schools. Uh, and teachers are placed on those COVID teams along with others, uh, the leadership.
I know about those. I, I know about those. So, uh, what about, but what about like a meaningful, uh, interactions with teachers?
Do you mean from us?
The handpicked, cherry picked selection of people to be on COVID teams. What about a representative? Request of the teachers?
Are, are you meaning, are you meaning from us to them, like a forum from us as, uh, the district to them? Or a staff meeting? Because either one, we, we can try to make happen to ensure that teachers can speak up about what it is that they need. Um, um.
Anything, how about anything? Um, at this point, it's a little too little, too late, it seems to me. If, you know, we're, we're gonna be opening very quickly, but, but anything's better than nothing.
Can I add, sorry, can I add to, 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 to the, so, so the question about the sneeze guards? The sneeze guards will be, the sneeze guard slash desk guard will be in the district Friday. They're supposed to be delivered on Friday. Now, potentially, we are, we, um, there may be, um. Some weather issues, and if there's some weather issues, they will be in our district on Monday. So those are scheduled to arrive on Friday, but I received notification yesterday that we may have some weather issues. And if we have some weather issues, those will be in our district on, on Monday. The input from the teachers, um, I. So I just received a text from, um. Carmella Johnson, and she's saying she's trying to talk, she would love to talk, her hand is raised, so it's, it's, it, it. It's a teacher. Um, I mean, I'm sorry, it's a, it's a parent pro, not a teacher, sorry, a parent pro. We have met with the unions, we have been working with the unions as of yesterday. We had a meeting with the, um, U T F, uh, S D I U president, as well as Congress president on yesterday. In regards to the February twenty-second, what's going on, us being ready to go, any questions that they may have. Uh, we, we met with them yesterday and, and we were.
With all due respect, the teachers' union is different from the teachers. Um, and I say this as a teacher being in a teachers' union. I, and I understand and I appreciate that you're reaching out to the teachers' union, which you should. But what is being done to talk to the rank and file, the people that are actually in the buildings? Cleaning their classrooms right now and are worried and afraid about, and are afraid to speak up about going back.
I, I understand that, but also, um, there was a note last time, um, from, you know, U T F. And, um, there was an expression of disappointment because, um, U T F was not being involved. And, um, so I, I, I meant, I lifted that to say, you know, hey, yes, we are talking to them. We have, we have been talking to them. Um, they have been a part of, um, of those conversations, um.
Fantastic. That's good, that's great. But I mean, that's only one small piece, so.
Wait a minute, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Ms. Laura, what is it exactly that you're asking her for? What, what is it? That you want to see from the administration?
I would like. Them to. Actually communicate with the teachers in a meaningful way and not with some kind of a. Like a COVID response team or through the U T F, which is, those are important as well. But if there's some way maybe that there could be. A survey done like what they did with the, with the parents, although. I, I, I don't, I don't even know at this point. I'm just trying to figure out some way of getting some communication. Between the administration and the, and the parent, and the teachers, because right now there's, it seems like there's virtually none.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Laura, let's do, let's, let's say this, Ms. Nita, let, Ms. Nita, is it Ms. uh, Stewart, Superintendent Stewart? Okay, the survey sounds good. Can we get a survey going of the cleanliness and the, uh, response to the COVID pandemic? Um, prior to going back in school, how it's being dealt with? And let them rate it and let them write, uh, comments as to what they would like to see happen. And then you can have your, then a survey, that sounds reasonable to me. And it can be unanimous, that way they can speak openly.
Anonymous?
Yeah. Yeah, and it, because it is, what did I say, unanimous, anonymous?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, in secret.
Anonymous and confidential, both.
It's about the same thing.
No, not in survey, not in survey data, it's, they're different things.
Well, do a survey, let them write it on paper. And then it seems to me that we could take a look at it seriously, because this is a life or death situation. And I would never want to
Literally.
Have our teachers or our administration or our students out there hanging. And it's something that we can do. So, um, Ms. Ms. Superintendent Stewart, is it possible for us to get a COVID survey going? To make sure that our teachers feel safe as they return back to a, uh, possibly a COVID situation? You know, face-to-face learning presents, uh, questions as it pertains to COVID and concerns. So Ms. Ms. Superintendent, uh, Stewart, how possible is it for us to maybe take a survey?
Not a problem, we can do a survey. Is it just a survey for teachers or is it a survey for all staff?
Ms. Laura, is it a survey for all staff or just teachers?
Well, I mean, do, in, are, do para pros, are they included with the teachers? Or?
No, it, it, that, that's a separate classification.
Okay, then, then teachers and staff, whoever has to be doing the work.
Okay, so we'll work on that. Um, when me and Superintendent Stewart have our one-on-one, I'll follow up with her. As it pertains to that, Ms. Laura, will you remind me of the things that I'm supposed to follow up with the administration? As it concern, as it pertains to your concerns?
Yeah, I did have another concern though, that about, and this might be more directed more towards Mr. Chapman. So it's, it's not necessarily the, the sanitation and the safety, but it is the internet connectivity, which is my understanding is not adequate for online and/or hybrid instruction at this point. And so, given that we were talking about like expanding hu, like we just passed a resolution to, you know, increase our internet connectivity with, with different hubs. I, I need some kind of, and I think the teachers need some kind of reassurance that there's going to be, it's one thing to have a hybrid plan about instruction. But without having the technical assistance or capability of doing it, you know, it's, it just sounds like a disaster waiting to happen. Um, I, I am getting reports of teachers using their own phones and computers. And teachers not having basic cables to connect devices together. Um, so I need some reassurance that there's going to be the technical capability by the twenty-second to be able to provide online instruction in a, in a hybrid model. And the other point, there, there was one other point. I, I have a lot of questions and, and that's why I did not vote to go back on the twenty-second. Because there's a lot of pieces that need to be dealt with before this happens. The other thing is have students and staff signed release forms for having their images broadcast on computer and on, on camera and video and all that kind of stuff.
Well, Ms. Laura, can we, can we, um, maybe get together and maybe even me, you and maybe see if we can get Ms. Nita or whomever you need to speak to from the administration? Because the administration can't guarantee the quality of the internet, that's not in their control. They can solicit for, um, internet service and things of that nature. But we all know, you don't get to control, uh, technology.
No, I understand that, but I know that my internet service is, is top of the line in my own house. And I understand that there are times when it goes down. But in general, I am reassured that when I pay premium prices for premium services, I'm going to get what I get. And, and is that the, the same going to happen for the Flint Community Schools? Because right now, I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing that teachers are not able to do their jobs because the internet goes down half a dozen times during the day. And there's not enough devices, there aren't even basic cables to connect microphones. And, and there's an, the, the, the wrong equipment is being used. Teachers weren't given input in, like what they needed, it, it's a mess. It's just, it's, it's, it sounds untenable.
We're going to have to have some type of a sit-down, we're going to have to have some type of sit-down, uh, board member McIntyre. And just kind of pace ourselves with your concerns and try to get them addressed. And we definitely want adequate internet for our students, if that is going to be the tool that we use. Um, but I don't think that they can tackle all this tonight, Ms. McIntyre. But we can definitely, um, you know, move forward.
They're saying they're going to tackle it all by February twenty-second, I see, okay.
Well, no, we have a pushback date, we also have a pushback date if they're not prepared. They have a pushback date and we're going to go into the schools and do the best we can. Like I said, we're in the middle of COVID, uh, Ms. Laura, and there are no guarantees and nobody's a hundred percent, not even the hospitals. We all, that doesn't make it right, and I'm not justifying any, uh, subpar, um, behavior. But what I am saying is they have to work with what they have to work with. And we're trying to get new internet and they have to see what it is going to be like. They're probably making every effort to step it up, but I don't know what they can promise you at this time. But we can check into it, we can look into it, but I don't know what else they can do, Ms. Laura. And I'm not telling you that to, but I'm just saying, you know, we have to give them the opportunity to, you know, operate in a pandemic. Yes, Ms. Wright, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to offer a suggestion. Um, a lot of the issues that, uh, Ms. McIntyre is addressing are related to academics. So I was wondering if maybe some of those things could be fleshed out and discussed more in the academic, uh, subcommittee. And then reports brought back to the board as they work through it.
The academic subcommittee, I mean, these aren't strictly what's covered in the academic subcommittees, as far as I know.
What did you say, I didn't get? I didn't hear what you said.
You want this to be taken to a subcommittee? Like, the academics just deals with like curriculum and stuff, not internet connectivity.
Anything that's related to the implementation of instruction is academic. So if the technology is crucial to imparting instruction, then that could be addressed there. That was just a suggestion, you know, it can be, yay, it could, you know, just a suggestion. If nobody liked that, likes that idea, that's fine, just a suggestion.
Well, it just seems to me that, given that we, we have this impending deadline of shoving everybody back into the schools with a global pandemic going on, that, that the whole board would want to be, you know, integrally involved in this to ensure the safety and the wellbeing of our, our staff and scholars.
My point was only, my point was only that we can flesh some of those things out through that committee. Some things you have to address now, some you can work on, you know, in, in more of a long range kind of. We need to deal with this situation, so it was just a suggestion.
Thank you for the suggestion. We did have a subcommittee meeting earlier this week and it seems to be beyond the scope of that committee.
Okay, well, it, it, beyond the scope of that committee.
I'm out of information, I'm out of information.
Go ahead, Dr. Mc.
Can we have like a point here for a minute? Uh, there's other people trying to speak and we have to respect Mr. Adrian Walker. We've been talking for about thirty or forty minutes and we have not given our colleagues the proper time to speak. We might have to go back to the Robert Rules of Order so we can get some things done. Because a lot of stuff we're talking about cannot be addressed in one setting.
Right.
And that's why we have these committees. But I think it's not fair that Mr. Adrian is the only male on here and he been trying to speak for the last thirty-five or forty minutes. I apologize, Adrian, because women's law.
All right. Mr. Mr. Walker have the floor.
Yeah, no, no need to apologize, Ms. McNell, I, I grew up in a house, uh, full of women and I love it. So I'm, I'm here for it and I, and I found tonight's, uh, conversation very informative. My only question, uh, I had two questions, actually. Uh, the first was COVID-related, um, specifically as it relates. I believe it was brought up in my first board meeting about the possibility of, uh, providing certain slots for our teachers to be vaccinated. And I just wanted, we don't have to get into, uh, if, if the information isn't there now. But we'd love to know the percentage of our teachers that have currently been vaccinated. And then also, are there any, um, potential barriers for those that, uh, are continuing to seek the vaccination options? I know there's been some hiccups with the rollout, um, here in Genesee County, hopefully that's smoothed over. But just want to gain a, a better picture for those that, again, do want to get vaccinated. Um, with the, with the percentage that already have been and maybe with the percentage that's waiting. Um, and, and aside from that, the only other question that I had that was COVID-related, um, dealt with, uh, one of the orders that came out from the state as it related to winter sports. And for me, I'm asking for the context, again, I don't, I don't know if we're planning to have sports or not. But when I checked our website, it said that there was a game, a home game, uh, for our, uh, basketball team on, I believe, uh, the fifteenth. It, it was scheduled, so if that's the case, I just had a question on whether or not we were allowing spectators or, um, if, again, we were having sports at all. Just trying to see how, uh, what, what is our, uh, district policy as it relates to, um, winter sports?
Uh, let's see, I'll take your first, your first question first. Um, the percentage of our staff who have, uh, been vaccinated. So, um, I, uh, sent out a survey to all of the staff, um, asking them if they were planning to, to take the vaccine. And if so, to respond to the survey. Uh, we had about, we had, uh, four hundred and fifty staff members who responded to the survey and stated that they were planning to, to take the vaccine. And when I say staff members, I'm including everybody, four hundred and fifty. Um, the reason for the survey was because at that point in time, I was trying to secure, um, some vaccines for the staff. Um, whether it was through one of, um, our, uh, local clinics to be able to send the staff there. Um, and, um, that, I'm still working on that, it hasn't panned out. But we have had, um, two, uh, clinics that we have been, that we have been able to have staff participate in. Only ninety staff, so the first weekend, it was on a Saturday, and we had ninety staff who were able to go and receive the vaccine. Last Friday, uh, we received an additional ninety slots where, uh, uh, staff members were able to go and take the vaccine. So that's, uh, one eighty, um, subtract that from the four fifty. We're expecting to get, expecting to get ninety additional slots this Friday, although that has not been confirmed. Um, as of yet, we're still, uh, we're, we're still waiting to get confirmation of that. Um, the problem is, um, it's just a, a limited number of vaccines around, uh, uh, the city. And so we're only able to secure X number of slots at a time. But we're still working on that and trying to secure more slots for all of the staff who would like to have, who would like to take the vaccine. Uh, did that answer your question about the vaccine?
Yeah, that answered, uh, mine, I, I think Ms. McNell had a, a question.
About the vaccine?
No, Superintendent, uh, um, you know, the, um, I think the GOP is holding up some pandemic funds. Uh, that, is that affecting how we would be able to reopen our schools? Is that money that they've been holding up at the state level is going to have an impact on how we, uh, use the COVID guidelines? Is that's going to be a problem?
Um, no, ma'am, not, not that I'm aware of, no. Not, not that I'm aware of, um, Don Pray, you want to, maybe you?
So we have enough, that's, that's what my concern was, no.
We have enough funds.
Yeah, yeah.
Those funds that, Ms. McNell, those funds that they're holding up would be related to the S R two funds that we would be receiving. So that is the, the funds that is supposed to be, um, um, almost four times what we received before that we haven't received yet. So it's not, um, that's new money, that's not related to the S R funds that I, I have already been available to us.
Oh, okay, so we have enough funds to do what we need, PPE and all of that, that's what my concerns were, okay.
Thanks. You're welcome.
And, and Board Member Walker, to go back to your question about the sports. Um, so at, at this point in time, um, no, we're not allowing, um, any, any spectators in for the sports. Um, I do believe, uh, that, um, up to, up to, um, two parents. But outside of that, um, no one else, I guess that's a little contradicting itself. Um, but, uh, so, up to, two parents, but outside of that, no one else as far as the sports. Um, are allowed in to, to, uh, yes, to view the games.
Yeah, thank you for that, yeah, I was just reading the article and it mentioned that school districts had the ability to limit, um, how many, uh, spectators would be allowed, so I just wanted to know what we were doing, thanks again.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board?
Board, uh, Board President, I don't have.
Okay, um, I wanted to know.
Go ahead.
Pardon me?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, I, that's okay, um, I, um, you said something about a walkthrough, is that on the nineteen?
Um, so, um, Ms. Uh, uh, Board Member Walker, uh, wanted to, wanted, wanted to do a walkthrough tomorrow, Friday, sorry, Friday, Friday. Friday, and he requested that, um, I participate in the walkthrough with him. And so Board Member Walker, Walker and I are walking through some buildings on Friday.
Okay, um, I want to schedule, I would like to schedule, I'm going to take a day off work to walk through all our buildings that I want to be, um, housing our students prior to opening. Um, I don't know if I can get Mr. Chapman or who, maybe the principals are in the building. I don't know exactly how that will work, but I do want to be able to have access to get into the buildings and, um, view them before we go back to school. And I also want it, you guys have, you guys have went on and I don't forget, I should have wrote it down, this period, I always say, write it down. I want to do a walkthrough. It was something pertaining to COVID, but I've lost that thought.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I guess that's it, I can't remember anything else, is, is there anyone else? Is that it, okay, good.
Board President McIntosh, can I, can I say something, please? Um.
Absolutely.
And, and Board Member Green is, is no longer on, um, and, and it's unfortunate because she made the comment. And I wanted to make sure that, that she, she heard, uh, that, you know, she heard me, but I'll, I'll, I'll call her. Um, she made the comment that, um, she thought that I had been a little disrespectful. And, um, I want board members to know that, that, that's, that's not my heart to be disrespectful to anyone. And if so, I disrespected anyone tonight, I apologize to you. Because in no shape, form or fashion, um, was I meaning to disrespect, um, anyone uh, with any, any of my responses or anything that I said to, to anyone. Um, and so if I did disrespect you, I apologize, I'm sorry. Um, didn't mean to be disrespectful in nature or tone. Um, I just, I thought that I had simply, uh, I thought that I had answered the question. Um, and even after we went on to something else, I sent a text message to my exec team. And I said, I thought I answered the question, did I not answer the question? And, and for me, in my mind, I thought I did answer the question and I thought that I did. It's saying, it's difficult for me to, to respond and say whether or not I have talked to, um, a, a specific group without knowing the specific group. Um, and so, uh, I, I do want to, to, uh, to once again, say, I, I'm sorry. Did not mean to, um, to respond, I mean, to be disrespectful to, uh, to anyone, uh, to any board member. So, um, if I did, I apologize to you for my, for my tone and my disrespect, if I was disrespectful. for my, for my tone and my disrespect, if I was disrespectful.
Point taken, Superintendent Stewart. We appreciate that. And we know that the load gets heavy, and we all get a little frustrated sometimes. And we don't mean to come across that way, but sometimes work is pressuring. And, you know. So we, I accept, I accept your, your apology, and I'll share that with Ms. Green and the other board members who are.
I will look into the, to the, the e-mail that was sent, the inquiry that was sent to see if so, there was an actual response to, to that person. And then I will follow up with board members to, to let you know. So I'll check my emails, and I'll look into any inquiries that I have, and I will follow up with board members and let you know what has transpired with any inquiries that I, that I have up to this point.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Stewart. Are there any other comments or questions at this time?
I just want to put this out there. I just want to say this, I think we all, I think we all, as an adult, sitting on this board, represent the educational system. We have respect for each other. We have to express ourself without being meaningful in it. It is okay to have a different opinion. This is on both sides. It's on both sides. And I think that from going forward, because we just came on, and some of us new, and we trying to learn, and we getting a little irritated because we're not getting what we want. But at the same time, our leadership and our character to demonstrate for the, how can I go into a classroom and teach discipline and behavior when we are out of behavior? I think we do need to tone it down a little bit, but I think we need to bring back the Robert Rules of Order, so that people have proper time to express themselves. We can talk to each other, but not at each other. And if I have done anything to offend anyone, I'm sorry. I tell people all the time, because I was in an automobile, automobile accident, I lost my voice. I never, I had to learn how to speak and talk, but when I'm rushed to speak, it creates a problem for me, and I can't get my words out, and so I find myself rushing. But it's, it's not that I have to study, I'm not like the average person. So I have to think about my words before I can say them, because I lost all, I, my neck was broken almost, and so they had to repair my neck. So I just say all this to say is that we have to be emotional when we're talking about things. We all want this school to start, and, but we don't have to be at each other's throat. We are going to make a lot of mistakes. We've been through a lot in this city, but we can be kind to each other.
Absolutely.
We can, we can do that as an adult. We have to be respectful of each other and give each other proper time to speak. And so I think today we got out a little out of time, because remember, we, you know, we only supposed to be in here an hour. It's almost nine o'clock, and I hate to see our board member just walk away angry and frustrated. That's not how adults should do, and I think we need to have a, a meeting with the board to talk about what is ethical, what is moral. Are we going to end up like the Flint City Council, we don't stop this? And that's my.
No, we're not, we're not going to end.
Oh, we're not, no, we're not.
We're not going to. And, and, and I understand that people I knew, I knew in this role, the superintendent, she inherited this in the middle of COVID. So, and her team, and many, many members of her team, because Assistant Superintendent was not Assistant Superintendent when COVID started. Superintendent was Assistant Superintendent. So we're all learning, and we're all stepping into new roles, and we all bring some knowledge, and we all need some knowledge. So I think we're going to have to work closely with each other. If you see somebody is missing the mark or somebody is not where you think they should be, or you know something that they don't know that will be instrumental in helping them, I think it's our responsibility as administration and a board to get together, if it means getting in a room together and banging it out. And I think it's okay to say, I don't know, because we're not going to solve problems and move forward pretending. So if, if we're having issues in our meetings, and you're asking for something and you're not getting it, then I think we owe it to one another to go behind the scenes after the meeting and say, you know, this is what I meant, this is what I need, I don't think you were getting what I'm saying. So that is what I try to, that is the bridge that I'm trying to make between the board and administration. With all that being said, though, we will have some tough discussions. Some of us will leave mad sometimes, but the sign of maturity is coming back, willing to work with that person, no matter how you're feeling personally, and realizing that this is not a personal process. This is a very public process, and we are working for the public. That includes our students, because we are a public government entity. So we have to take ourselves out of it. We have to do the best we can for the people that we are serving. That is what we are all here to do. That is what we should be here to do. So let's not take it personal. If you have a rough night, let it roll off your back and regroup, maybe do some research or whatever it's going to take to bring you back new. And so let's just move forward. Let's not harbor ill feelings, because it's work, and we got to continue to do it. So that's all I have to say. Anybody else? I'd like to close this out adjourned. Is that it? Okay, our next regular board meeting is Wednesday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty P M. Seeing there is no further action, I declare this board committee of a whole meeting adjourned, and the time is eight forty-seven, and you all have a blessed evening. Good night.